Meeting is called to order. We have a quorum. If you'd please read the call.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of Said City, will convene an executive session, workshop, and regular meeting on Tuesday, January 17, 2006, at 4:15, 5:30, 6 o'clock PM, in the Commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron, Texas. Executive Session A. Discussion pursuant to Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code regarding pending litigation between the City of Brownsville Aviation Department and NeoPlan. B. Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code to provide advice and counsel in connection with pending litigation styled and numbered Zimmerman versus Brownsville, Calls Number 2003-063199E, 357th District Court, Cameron County, Texas.
So, Mayor, oh, she's gonna read them all?
She's gotta read them all.
Discussion pursuant to Section 551-074 of the Texas Government Code regarding economic development opportunities in the Brownsville downtown area. D. Discussion pursuant to Section 551-072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property. And E. Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code to provide advice and counsel in connection with legal status of proposed labor agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Officers Association, to include related grievances and claims affecting overtime paying calculations.
All right. I need a motion.
Some move to go.
Motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Zaneros to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll be in executive session.
The sign ordinance does not, in this particular case, give unfettered discretion to the enforcement officials to determine the legality of a billboard based upon the content of its message. Again, what's on the billboard is not pertinent, but the location, the size, the illumination, all those come with city's purview to control such. The ordinance that will be presented later, the ordinance does not create or otherwise establish a, or designate any particular class or group of persons who will or should be especially protected or benefit by the terms of the ordinance. It's pertinent across all parts of the community, all segments of the community. Jim, do you want to mention anything about the constitutional issues regarding signage at this time?
Mayor, members of the Commission, I'd prefer to just answer any questions that you might have concerning the ordinance. It's a, it's an effort to codify all types of outdoor signage, onsite and offsite. Because of the important constitutional and commercial issues that are involved, a great deal of time and effort was put into the drafting of the, of the ordinance. And it was also, as Ben said, reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission for their, for their views of it. The idea is to, as Ben said, limit the placement, the location, the sizing of all signage in, in the city limits. And we're now permitted, even in our ETJ, to, to provide a unified and standardized guidelines which detail where signs can be permitted, the sizing, and, and also the length of time for political advertisements.
Well, I assume, Jim, that there's some relevant authority, both statutory and/or case law, regarding differences of opinion involving signage and issues regarding First Amendment or what have you. Were all those relevant statutes and authorities kind of reviewed and taken into account when we were amending and revising the current sign ordinance?
At length. In fact, this, this ordinance is probably close to a year in the drafting. It involved looking closely at a number of other cities, larger cities, who've had complicated ordinances and who've taken them up to the Texas Supreme Court, in the case of the City of Houston, to litigate the technicalities of the ordinance. And I believe that there's no question that this ordinance squarely complies with statutory and case law requirements in Texas.
This item is not up for action tonight, okay? But because of tangent matters associated with this, you know, I think that this is something that we may want to also discuss because of the related litigation in executive session. I'll leave that up to you, but there may be some, some impact that this may or may not have.
I, part of the allegations that are made in the public record were, was that the city did not have a unified and standardized ordinance that governed new signage. We don't, I don't agree with that.
That's what this does.
But that was a part of what the allegations, part of the allegations that were made. This, again, is, is an effort to do that. It's designed to not be restrictive of any type of business or any type of advertisement, but it's just based on public safety issues, state law regarding to, regarding placement along the highways and other things that the state prescribes for the city to follow. There's, it's not based on aesthetics, it's based on public policy concern, planning and zoning concerns, and the issues that the city faces in trying to regulate both onsite and offsite advertising.
Right now, do we have the authority to regulate in our ETJ, based on the current sign ordinance or on, based on the law?
The law gives us that authority.
But we've not exercised it?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a question. Do we have a-
How many days do we have?
I'm sorry?
Like, prior to the election, how many days before can they start putting up signs?
Our current ordinance-
So, clear?
Our current ordinance does not make that provision.
Was there any type of draft that we could, we could see what, what additions or changes might be?
I don't know. I thought we had one.
To that-
Currently, we do not. The current sign ordinance does not have a time limit for placement of political signage.
I was under the impression that we did because on my last election, I think it was sixty, I'm not sure, it was sixty or ninety days prior to the election date. Sixty.
Hit the mic, man.
There has been ordinances in the past that had that, but when we codified the, the local government code, those ordinances, our attorneys that were charged with that task, found state law that prohibits that, and they took that out. So, so, yes.
When was that taken out?
You're talking about-
When, when we codified our-
Our municipal code just recently, within the last year?
Well, after May 7th.
It was, it was contrary to the state law for that reason, in order for us to enact new orders.
Yes.
My question is, was it before or after this last election?
It was before. You see, when we codified it was, was over a year, almost two years ago, according to the City Secretary. So, so it was, it was before. So, you see, they're still confusing that what we're trying to do here is codify through one ordinance that pertains to all signs, both billboards, on-premise signs, off-premise signs, political signs, all kinds of signs. And, and, and not to dictate what, what could, could not be placed on the messages, but safety concerns regarding how they're put up, when they need to be taken down, and, and also where they could be placed. And that's what we're doing at this point.
And what does state law say?
What, what's in here?
It discusses how far apart they have to be on a state highway.
Mike, Mike.
Do you think we can get that, Mr. Goza, do you think we can get that emailed or that drafted, put in the mail, so we could look at what, what exactly you are talking about? Because I know you're coming out talking about signs and then-
I thought you had received the, the draft.
Share, share, boys.
Of the ordinance.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, but y'all gonna draw something up, or you're gonna get a copy of-
We have a, we draft of the ordinance, and I'm sorry you did not get it. It should've been part of your packet.
It was not.
Well, it's not. I didn't see it.
Well, I don't understand the oversight there, but we've had an ordinance drafted in completion for some time. It's an extensive and very complicated ordinance, and we'll get that to you right away.
Oh, yeah. Before the night's over, I'll, I'll get you that. I'm sorry. And I thought we were all-
Share the mic, boys.
But, but, but that's what we're trying to do, and I'm sorry you didn't get it. But, the, the ordinance, we have a final draft, and it's a draft, and what, tonight we're seeking is your guidance. And, and yes, we cannot, according to what I understand of state law, the attorney can correct me or his assistant, but, but we cannot dictate how soon they can be placed, but we can dictate when they need to come down. If the sign's no longer needed, it should be come down-
Currently, what are we at? Is it a couple of days, fifteen days after the election, or?
What he's saying that it's no longer, it's no longer in effect.
Right now, we don't have anything.
Oh, he said, we don't have any?
No, right now, we don't have a-
Even after?
No, you do not.
No, nothing.
Okay.
So, if we pass an ordinance, man-
I should've left mine up.
Man, we passed an ordinance, it was a few years ago, the sign ordinance that went into effect, regulating political signs.
Josh.
And those type-
No.
The codification process was completed.
Uh-huh.
The ordinance was left out. Just, so it just, it just went away? Are you telling me the, the, just, it just completely dis-
It just went away because it was unconstitutional.
That, that's very surprising that it just, it wasn't terminated by the-
And I remember questions being asked when we were voting on that, and issues being raised, that we wanted to make sure that, since it was such a voluminous document, that everything that was in, that was in the ordinance was going to be included in this, and now we find out, especially a touchy one like this one. So, that concerns me, because there may be other things that were quote-unquote deleted, because they may have been in, and that's fine. We want to be, obviously, state law takes precedence, but the whole point is making sure that our ordinances are, are in compliance with state law.
I agree with you, Mayor, and, and I will ask our City Secretary to, to confirm that, my statement.
Or at least, let's find out what got deleted. We should be able to know that.
Right, and, and she is the caretaker of the codification manual, so.
How many pages is this proposed draft?
The proposed draft is about twenty pages.
Phew.
It's very comprehensive, and it-
No kidding.
I believe we've done a very good job, and, and we got comments from the APA.
How long was it before?
Josh, you get called all the time on these things, right?
No, we, I've never seen one.
Okay.
Mayor, there was a, I know that McAllen or Mission just recently passed a new ordinance on signs.
Have you seen that one?
Because of the concern about overabundance of signs on expressways and some of the major affairs.
Correct.
Could you get us a copy? I'm not sure it was McAllen or Mission, but could you find out and see what they passed? That way, we can probably do something very similar to what they've done, I'm sure.
Sure.
Because at one time, we probably had the strongest sign ordinance in the valley. I know we did, because we had a lot of complaints from some of the other billboard companies and some of the people that put up a lot of signs.
Right, right.
And all of a sudden, now, I find out it's gone. So, I'd like to know.
Well, we have a monatorium on signs.
Yeah, I know, on that particular issue, but we had an ordinance against temporary signs. We had an ordinance against flashing arrow signs, completely banned them. Are you telling me that's no longer in existence?
No. I'm not aware of a, of a sign. Signs right now, as it relates to, to a business, go with the building, building permit requirements. And, and it's tied into the size of the building, unfortunately, and makes it very confusing for the building official, planning department, to, to see how tall a sign should be, et cetera.
I understand-
But flashing signs, and, and those are not permitted through our zoning ordinance. You see, the zoning ordinance covers the flashing signs, the temporary signs, the signs on trailers with the arrow. That's, that's regulated through our zoning ordinance.
Sometimes you'll see fifty or a hundred signs right in front of the old Kmart on, on Public Health. At one time, those were not allowed. The little temporary ones, because they were, it became a hazard from blowing away in the wind.
Right.
Are they allowed now?
No.
Not?
No, but they come in through our zoning ordinance.
And they're not allowed, they're not allowed-
Copy of that part of the ordinance also. I need to see that.
They're not allowed on easements.
Okay, but if, and if they're off the easement?
The, the code enforcement people should enforce that. Those are the guys that get all the phone calls. Go ahead, Josh.
Then it falls into the construction part of the signage, whether it's going to be permitted by the building inspections to, well, there's a safety or not, while allowing a building or a, a sign just to stand there out there, because of wind conditions. And that's when we started to enforce, to remove them. They need to get a permit from the building inspection department.
Okay. Any other questions?
Rick, you have anything? No?
Oh, just to reiterate what Mr. Medina was saying, most of the signs, or all the signs for that matter, that are, come across our, our department, the criteria we use right now is whatever's on the zoning ordinance. As far as a setback from the front side, we're-
Right-of-way deals.
Yes, the right-of-ways, easements, and the height restrictions according to each individual area district.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we use to determine the-
Well, we gotta get something concrete, and that's what we're gonna eventually have to do, that way we can all be on the same page.
We'll forward copies of the proposed ordinance immediately, and then post it on our next meeting to discuss it.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to please ask two very special individuals, Carlos Martina Aguirre Jr. from Lucio Middle School, and Arnutfo Rodriguez IV from Stillman Middle School. They're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and in the Texas Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On, on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas one and indivi-
All right. Please remain standing is Reverend Jesse Granados. Welcome, Reverend. If you'd please lead us in the invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Our gracious Lord and Father, we thank you today for the privilege of coming before your throne today on behalf of this meeting and this honorable City Council. We pray, Lord God, that we be filled today with the knowledge of your will, so that we may know exactly what decisions to make today. Lord, I ask you in the name of Jesus that we would be strengthened with your supernatural strength to bear up under the strain of everyday demands of life and business and decisions that we are to make here. Grant, Lord, that we realize that every decision we make today here will not only affect thousands of people today, but many generations to come. We ask all of these things, that, also that we may walk worthy of the calling to which you have called us in this city. We ask all these things in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Maybe seated. We have a first, the only proclamation this evening. Commissioner Zaneros commending the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, JJAEP. Who is here to receive the proclamation? Step forward.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program and its continuing community service. Whereas, since its founding in 1996, the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, known as JJAEP, in San Benito, has, under program director Jose Luis Gonzalez, served more than a thousand students. And whereas, JJAEP is a therapeutic educational program that serves adolescents between ten and seventeen who have been expelled from their local school districts and represent those who are at high risk of dropping out of school altogether. And whereas, JJAEP has one of its pri, as one of its primary goals, the reconnection of youth with the educational process, offering a number of educational options, including basic academic skills, high school completion, special education, academic credit recovery, GED, and tax preparation, and pre-vocational training and career exploration, along with other programs aimed at enhancing social life skills. And whereas, also available at JJAEP are counseling, parent support and training, community service opportunities, service learning activities, and transitional services. And whereas, JJAEP has a proven record of providing alternative education programming to thousands of at-risk youth in Texas, to the benefit of the youth and to this area. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Said City, do hereby recognize and commend the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, JJAEP, for its continuing service to the South Texas community and to the youth of our community it has served and continues to serve, done on the 17th day of January 2006, signed by Eric Trevino, Junior Mayor, and this City Commission. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just add as a, as an aside, that I was the hearings officer for the school district for several years, and, and I was the hearings officer for the school district for a number of years. And a lot of the students actually preferred the Alternative Education Program, the JJAEP.
Oh, really?
They did so much better in that kind of structures.
They do that good of a job. They'd rather go there.
They do, do a really good job.
Hi, I'm Joanna Ariela, the Assistant Director at the JJAEP. We greatly, greatly appreciate this proclamation. On behalf, the, the staff really works hard for our students, and the students are, are really appreciative. And with Mr. Ayala, our community coordinator, he does go out of his way to help the students. He really appreciates working with the students. He's working on seven days, goes five days to school, and then two days on the weekend. He's really helping out. And on behalf of Jose Luis Gonzalez, myself, and Dr. Sanchez, we really, really appreciate this. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for the great work you do.
Thank you for the thing you do for our youth. Thank you, Luis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. Item two, we have a presentation, Federal Legislation and Projects. Mr. Medina?
Admiral, Mayor, and City Commission, I would like to present to you our Washington Consultant, Mr. Mike Parker. He's here to discuss latest, the legislation in the Washington and our projects with us.
Welcome back, Congressman.
Thank you very much. Before I begin, let me just say that several years ago, when I was head of the Corps of Engineers and was Assistant Secretary of the Army, I made a visit to Fort Hood, Texas, and was made an honorary Texan. And you have, for the first time, provided me the opportunity to pledge allegiance to the State of Texas, and I appreciate that opportunity. Mayor Trevino and members of the City Commission, it is an honor to come before you tonight. I've had the pleasure of representing the interests of the City of Brownsville before Congress and the administration in Washington, DC, for the past two years. And I'm glad to report that the fiscal year 2006 federal appropriation cycle was a very successful one for the city. In a state as large as Texas, there are obviously many towns and cities competing for limited federal dollars. And while Texas has five members serving on the 66-member House Appropriations Committee, each of those is forced to focus on the needs of his or her district. This is especially true with transportation projects and environmental restoration projects in the Energy and Water Appropriations Bill, where resources have become extremely limited. As a result, when we began working on fiscal year 2006 projects, we recognized that the city would need advocates beyond its elected representatives if its priorities would be funded beyond a minimal level. Therefore, we turned to congressional leaders and staffers outside of Texas, such as Senate Appropriations Committee Chairman Thad Cochran of Mississippi, and Energy and Water Appropriations Committee Chairman Dave Hobson of Ohio, and combined their assistance with the efforts of Representative Solomon Ortiz, Senator Kay Bailey Hutchinson, and Senator John Cornyn, to achieve millions of dollars in congressional earmarks, earmarks to fund priorities for the City of Brownsville. Among the projects funded were $4 million to design and construct a multimodal facility for Brownsville urban system, construction of a transfer station on the north side of town, and renovation of the current administrative building, bus yard, and parking area. $1.6 million for construction of segment number one of Morrison Road in Brownsville in conjunction with TexDOT to reduce congestion associated with US 7783 widening. And $75,000 for the Brownsville Resacas Project to continue feasibility study to evaluate environmental restoration of the resacas, improve flood protection, and enhance water storage. We were particularly pleased to have gotten funding for the Resaca Restoration Project this year. Many projects of, in this particular account, were zeroed out as a result of budget cuts. However, it is important to remember that when a project is unfunded for a year, the impact actually reaches far beyond that year. In bureaucratic circles, it is viewed as a lack of commitment and support from Congress, which is often a fatal blow for that particular project. The most important factor for this relatively small amount, $75,000, is that the decision-makers in Congress and in the administration will recognize that even in the midst of a budget crunch, when projects were often eliminated, there is support for this project, and more funding will be sought. It sends a clear message to the Resaca, that the Resaca Restoration Project is and will remain a high priority. While working with members of, and staff of the US Congress, while that is our primary role, we also work with the executive branch when it is in the interest of the city. Earlier this year, we had the opportunity to assist Airport Director Larry Brown in obtaining a $2,46,000 grant through the Federal Aviation Administration, Part 150 Airport Improvement Program. The 150 funding allows the airport to make improvements and provides the ability to buy land. In looking at fiscal year 2007, as we turn our attention to that year, to that appropriation cycle, I know that there are many important projects for which the city desires federal funding. One of these, which we discussed with Representative Solomon Ortiz and staffers for both the Transportation Appropriations Committee and the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, is completion of the historic hike and bike trail, where that completion would cost an estimated $2 million. There, there will not be another authorization bill for surface transportation projects until fiscal year 2010. Therefore, any attempt to have the historic hike and bike trail authorized under the recreational trails program will have to wait nearly five years. However, there is at least hope for funding next year in the fiscal 2007 appropriation process. That particular appropriation bill is done each and every year. In conversations with the staff of Representative Ortiz, it is clear that he would like to be helpful with this project, and we would welcome the opportunity to assist in this effort. One other project which we discussed today, and was brought up to me by Commissioner, by Mayor Trevino and Commissioner Hernandez, was the need for additional post offices in this town. It was interesting that we went to a post office today. I've never seen a line in my life like that line. And when I found out that you only had two here, to me, that was just astounding. I know that y'all have worked in that area before. And with the Postal Reorganization Act of 1972, Congress cannot mandate that a post office be built, because the postal service is separate from that. However, since they do go to Congress for funding on certain things, you can utilize the goodwill of Congress to encourage them to look very closely at building a post office, which is needed in this town as much as anything I've ever seen. And I know that the city and the mayor mentioned that y'all have moved in that direction before, trying to get that done. In closing, let me say that I would love to be able to take credit for all the funding that you received from the federal government. But the fact of the matter is, you have some of the finest professional staff in your city of any place that I've ever worked. Whether it's the city manager, or Charlie Cabler, or whether it's Ben Medina, or Larry Brown, all the people with the transportation system, they have been extremely helpful to us. And anytime that we needed to contact them and get information, they gave us the information that we needed, so that we could make a substantive argument for the projects that were needed. And, and they, they gave us cogent, solid material to deal with, and you should be very proud of that. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would welcome any questions.
Congressman Parker, please allow me, on behalf of this commission and its citizens of this great city, first of all, thank you for your efforts on our behalf over the last two years. And I think that this past year, we saw some of the fruits of your labors along with our trips to Washington, which need to continue in order to maintain a viable presence and line of communication, because I think you mentioned it, that the squeak- line of communication, because I think you mentioned it, that the squeaky wheel gets greased first, and if you're not out there asking and requesting, you're very likely to get lost in the shuffle. And it's so hard to believe that that could happen in Washington, of all places. But we want to make sure that we do everything possible within our own efforts with your assistance professional. I also want to acknowledge Brad Ayers, your assistant, for being here this evening, and I want to thank him for his efforts. But we know that it's a struggle, but I think we're in a lot better shape from a federal standpoint than we were two years ago. And I continue to have great expectations for the city for this coming year into the future, and we're expecting more of the great things from you and your staff. So on that regard, I want to thank you. These millions of dollars mean a lot to the projects, and we're not going to stop there. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Let me just mention, Mr. Mayor, I had an old politician tell me one time, said, "If you don't have a seat at the table, you can be guaranteed that you are on the menu." And that's what winds, that's where we wind up a lot of times. We have to have somebody with a seat at the table in order to help make decisions.
Congressman Parker, on behalf of myself and my constituents and our great citizens here in Brownsville, I too would like to thank you and your staff for everything that you've done for our great city. Continue to do good work, and I know when I've taken these trips up to Washington, we have a great staff that, you know, they really go up there and go prepared, and they bring all the information necessary that's needed to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish. So I'd like to thank them also for everything they do. So, thank you.
I have just one question for you. We talked at lunch, did you buy some of that beachfront property on South Pottery Avenue?
I'm afraid I can't afford it.
Did you make it out there?
We went out there, it's gorgeous.
That's our backyard.
It's gorgeous.
Now you know why we're so proud of the whole area.
On the border by the sea.
Mike, my deal was just, you know, when we come back and report what it is that happened on our trip to Washington, a lot of criticism is given and a lot of things are said about these trips. And the one thing, or several good things that I learned on this trip, this last trip that we took with you in May, was that when Mayor Trevino contacted me two years ago to meet you and to consider your services for this city, I was just blown away with simple, the access that you and your staff have with congressmen, with senators, with all of these important people that we needed to talk to, and of course, with your past as, your service as a congressman, that served completely. I mean, we are on a schedule, for those that don't know, we are on a five-thirty AM to a seven PM schedule, speaking. And if we're so much as late to one meeting with one congressman or with one senator, that throws off the whole schedule for the day. And the one thing that I did appreciate on this trip was how you and your staff had the access, the well, the know-how and the access to all of these places that we needed to get to. And that in itself is worth a lot of commendation because you saved us time and money and got us to the right places so that we could come back and give this community all this money that we need. We find ourselves in a very trying time right now in this city, and we depend on those federal dollars. And I just want to commend you and thank you and Brad for all the attentions, you know, that you gave us on that trip and for going that extra mile to make sure that all these citizens receive, you know, its fair share of what the government has to offer. So, thank you.
Well, I think it's very important for the citizens of Brownsville to understand, when you come to Washington and we go and meet all of these individuals that are making decisions that affect the lives of the citizens of Brownsville, we're not asking for money that is not, that does not belong to the citizens of Brownsville. They have sent that money to Washington. It is their money. They are saying, "We want some of the, some of the money, not all the money. We want some of the money that we have sent you to be returned to us to provide a better standard of living for our children, for our communities," so that we can take that money and we can invest it in the proper way for our citizens. We're not going asking for a handout, and I think it's important, and we try to make sure that members of Congress understand, and especially those members of Congress that are not from Texas, try to make them understand that we're not asking for something that is not already ours, that we're asking for things that we have already paid for.
We're simply requesting our share.
Just, we want our fair share, we don't want anything more.
What I thought was, just one more thing, what I thought that was really, really good out of this trip was that everybody assumed that we would just go to speak to Congressman Ortiz, to Kay Bailey Hutchinson, to the Texas representatives. But when you took us to a representative from Mississippi, you took us to a representative from Illinois and tried to take that back door towards the funding, you know, to be able to, to help get all these other people, you know, all these other congressmen to be able to notice and know who Brownsville was. You know, I think that we have a lot of new friends in Washington, and that's also thanks to the work that you do for us. So, thank you very much.
Congressman, anybody else?
Congressman, I just want to, again, echo the comments by the commission and the mayor. I look forward to working with you in the near future and helping, again, shed some light on new projects that the commission will be undertaking. And again, thank you for all that you do. What do you call it? One question that I did have, and I spoke a little bit about last night, and I really had a pleasure last night speaking with you and Brad and everybody, was regarding the Sports Foundation, reviewing the memos that had been sent out to the mayor and staff, what do you call it? There was a, there was a, there were statements there made about Sports Foundation, about funding. I'm eager to find out, and I know it's been short notice over last night till today, to look at what may happen because of this and all the different directions that we're going in with, with that, to hopefully maybe still secure some of that funding for Brownsville, because that's important.
Well, one thing that we did, we found out about this last night, yesterday, I mean, this has been a recent development. We have talked to Congressman Ortiz's office, Nando Gomez, who works, Fernando Gomez, who works in his office. We have discussed, you know, what the situation is, trying to find exactly where everything is. You know, you don't want to make a quick decision about things, but the work that we did on that, we were asked by the mayor and the commission to, to work with them as far as getting the funding. And even in the bill, the line item in the bill, it says Brownsville, Texas. Then all of a sudden, these other things come up. I know that Nando Gomez is going to be contacting the city manager and talking with him, and I suppose that'll probably occur probably tomorrow. But whenever I talk with him, he said that I would, he would be calling him and then, and then trying to move far and find out exactly where we are on all of that. So, right now, it's kind of up in the air. It's been kind of a surprise all the way through.
Thank you, Congressman. Commissioner Arroyo?
Well, I just want to say it was a pleasure visiting with you again on this trip, and I wanted to thank you for bringing guests to our Rio Grande Valley. I know they had not been here before, and I hope they have enjoyed it as much as other tourists that come down here. Don't hesitate to bring any congressman down, too.
And we're going to do that. We've, in fact, we have invited every member of Congress that we've dealt with, we invite them to come, and we're, we will continue to do that. Brad and his wife, they have a home in DC, but they also have a home in Austin, Texas. So, they're Texans, Brad's getting to be a Texan.
We're still celebrating, aren't we? Everybody?
Hook 'em horns.
Texans learning Spanish.
That's right.
But I also brought my wife this time, and we have thoroughly enjoyed being down here. Hopefully, next time, we can stay a little longer.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Congressman. We'll see you soon. Keep up the great work. Have a safe trip back. Item five, I'm sorry, item four.
Attorney General.
Sorry, item three. Myself. Consent agenda. Any changes?
You can read it. Would you approve?
No, it's just a consent agenda.
Okay, so move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioners Enos, seconded by Commissioner Longoody. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item four.
Mayor, item four is improperly noticed, and I'm requesting it to be re-noticed on the next meeting.
A motion to table by Commissioner Nando, seconded by Commissioners Enos. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item five.
Item five, public hearing in action, our first reading of ordinance number two thousand six fourteen fifty, amending chapter sixty-six of the Code of Ordinances, creating a juvenile case manager fund and its administration.
Members of the City Commission, the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure was amended recently to allow the city to include a charge, a cost of court, to allow us to hire a juvenile case manager for our municipal court. Ordinarily, when the state allows us to add a fee or an advisory administrative charge like this that goes directly to the state, this one is designed to stay here within the community to provide additional follow-up on the juvenile probationers. The explanation, I got the public policy purpose, is to allow us to follow up on the probationers and not just wait and see if they get in trouble or not, but to have a case manager that actually stays in contact with them and tries to ensure that they stay on the right track with their, with their municipal court probation. And I think the studies indicated, as I understood it, that that was an important juncture in many of these young people's lives, and that the state felt like it was worthwhile to give the city an opportunity to establish a fund which would allow us to hire someone that would try to oversee that program and to make sure that the juveniles that were on probation with the city maintained the condition of the probation and hopefully stayed out of any further trouble. The fee that's permitted by the state is up to five dollars per charge, not, not per ticket, but in the event that someone was, received five actual charges against them, then there would be an up to a five-dollar charge, or up to a five-dollar fee for each charge.
That's going to be on every citation that comes in?
That would be on each citation that comes in, yes, sir. There are a number of...
There's some discretion.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was the maximum amount that was permitted. In many cases, the state themselves assigns fees to us of ten, fifteen dollars for different types of administrative costs, which all go directly to them. So, this is one of the unusual situations where, for public policy reasons, they're allowing us to keep this additional cost here within the community.
Is this, this juvenile case manager is going to be part of municipal court?
Yes, sir.
Who would be determining, I mean, who makes the decision and who runs, who's going to run that portion of it?
It would be through the Municipal Court Administration, Lucky Lial, and Administration of the Municipal Court. And it would work, it's possible, I understood, I don't know the details, but the purpose of this was to create a fund which would allow them then to, to hire that person, and there's still some question if she could maybe, he or she could maybe in addition, do some other tasks, but that would be their primary purpose, and that would be the source for funding that position.
Jim, this fund would be for the case manager and its administration? Is that how it's worded here?
No, just the case manager.
Just for the case manager? And then it would fall under Lucky Lial?
Correct. That's correct, yes.
It falls under Ben Neese, who's the director of the municipal court. They can give that responsibility to a current employee, maybe with a little bit increase in salary.
I agree with you, I think it'd provide a...
But it does not have to be five dollars, you can, you can set it at one or two or three. We have no fund that's up to five dollars.
Excuse me, Jim, how heavy a load is it? How many juveniles do you all, do they actually deal with every month? Is it a full-time position?
I don't believe it would be full-time, and my understanding was, though, that currently we have no one that actually oversees the administration of the juvenile probationers. That, for example, if they're given ninety days probation, if they don't get in trouble within that time period, no one's there really following up to give me guidance or even checking on them month to month to be sure that they're in compliance.
I think Commissioner Arroyo was asking what the caseload was, right? Like, what's the caseload on?
I don't know as far as a percentage of the load or not. I know that it's, it's, they consider it to be a significant part of what the court staff...
So, it wouldn't be a job that they're going to be, the person would be sharing half a day working on juveniles and half a day on something else?
I think that would be possible, but as I understood...
That's probably up for discussion, is it the new...
My understanding was they were trying to create the fund for it, which would allow them then to fill that position and to cover as many of those services as possible with that funding.
All right, this is a public hearing?
Mayor, oh, Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners, it, I guess it sounds odd for somebody to sit up here and say, "We don't want money to be coming into the copper." But, you know, our citizens are paying a hefty penny when they come in to pay for their violations or whatever citation they got. And five dollars, to me, on every single count is, is pretty, pretty steep. I suggested, you know, on those, we look into that portion, or have somebody look into that portion so we can work on it.
You said it's up to five, it could be less.
Yes, it could be less, you can, from one to five, you can set, you can set the number.
Well, I think, can't the judge do it on a case-by-case basis?
No, sir, I believe that the amount of the actual administrative fee has to be set by the commission.
Okay, but then it says, "Court is authorized to waive the fee in case of financial hardship."
Yeah.
They can waive the total fee a hundred percent, but you need to set the fee, what the fee is supposed to be.
And they have criteria that have to be satisfied in order to satisfy, in order to qualify as a financial hardship as well.
Well, in an effort not to overburden our, our community, maybe we could meet halfway or two dollars per citation, and if it is too heavy a burden, the judge can waive it for some individuals.
The other thing is, I think, Charlie, you have the better idea, which is trying to add, trying to keep it in-house, and that way, it does not become a situation where you're trying to charge more money per, per ticket or per charge. That way, we need to raise that...
We don't have any other fee that's five dollars, five dollars. I would, I would recommend we set it at one or two dollars, two at the very most, and then we can work on the...
I think that's...
It is a very important position, by the way, because we have no one that oversees the juveniles that are being cited into municipal court on classy misdemeanors, just assuring that they attend classes relating to possible, maybe alcohol-related programs, et cetera like that.
All right.
Do we set the fee today? Is that part of this deal today?
That's, it's, it's an action item.
Okay.
Mayor, I think we need to look at this carefully, because it's not, like Commissioner Longoody said, this is not supposed to be a windfall for the city.
In fact, it can't be.
This is supposed to cover, well, but you, at five dollars a five, it's going to be a huge windfall.
Well, we can do less.
It has to be a lot less.
Two dollars?
Do we know? How many citations are issued? Do we have a number to kind of extrapolate the number?
It goes from one to five or six citations sometimes?
We can go as little as a dollar.
Bobby?
Why don't we close the public...
All right, there's any, well...
Why don't we close it and then continue?
So move to close public hearing?
Or do we continue the hearing, Jim? So we can get some of that information?
I'll make a motion to close.
Continue the public hearing.
That way, you can get the information.
Judge Neese will be back, and I think that he has a lot of this from memory. He was at a judicial conference.
Do you want us to close the public hearing, or do you want us to continue it?
You can close the public hearing and...
Continue action?
Continue the action.
All right. We have a motion to close public hearing by Commissioners Enos, seconded by Commissioner Longoody. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Action.
Okay, do we continue it, or do we go ahead and, are we going to set it today?
That's the commission's option. If the commission wants to set the fee today, then we can bring the, bring the ordinance back for second and final reading.
One dollar?
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to move that we set it for two dollars.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to set the fee at two dollars by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioners Enos. All in favor? All opposed?
No.
Two nays, and motion carries. Item six.
Consideration and appropriate action, if any, with respect to the pending litigation styled in number Zimmerman versus Brownsville, cause number two thousand three zero six three one nine nine E, three hundred and fifty-seventh District Court, Cameron County, Texas.
Now I know how Ben Medina feels having to pop up on each issue. I understand that what we're recommending to the court is that we get a ruling on our motion for new trial, which is currently pending, and proceed to analyze our, our appellate issues and to follow up with the court from there, with this commission from there.
All right, this is an action item, to follow recommendation of counsel. Motion by Commissioners Enos, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven.
Consideration in action to acknowledge the Finance Director's financial statements and cash investment report for the city of Brownsville for the first quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand and five.
Attorney General, Mayor, members of the City Commission, you have a, a handout of all the first quarter financials for the city. I will go very briefly and maybe just highlight some of the important things that are included in the report.
Smile a little bit, Pete.
One of the things that, that we look at very closely every, every month when we get our sales tax distribution, since sales tax comprises about twenty-nine, thirty percent of our general fund budget, and right now, the, the sales tax is a little below the projected amount. We can go to number, let's go to number two. Number two just gives you, this page just gives you a comparison of the budget versus the actual for the various years. And right now, the budget for the general fund calls for any fund balance of twelve million two seventy-five nine seventy. That number is going to be reduced for the simple reason that during fiscal year two thousand six, when we were preparing the budget for two thousand six, there was a receivable that was due by CDCB that at, when the budget was approved, we did not have it, so we went ahead and recorded that revenue in two thousand six. It was received in two thousand five, so that means that there is going to be an adjustment made this fiscal year because the money was received last year, and it's in the fund balance, at the beginning fund balance. So, if we were to look at that two thousand six budget ending fund balance of the other year, that... number would go down to around $11.4 million. Next page, please. And that's the number that I'm saying, instead of $12,275, it'll be around $11.4 million. Next. The general fund, how are we doing in the general fund the first quarter? We received $22 million plus in revenues, expenditures of 17.4. We're at 4.6 plus. And one of the reasons why we're, the first quarter normally is very, very good for us because the majority of the edward arm tax is collected on the first quarter. As the year trickles down, the edward arm tax collections obviously decrease because the majority has already been collected. On page 5 shows you the, how are we doing in sales tax? We are approximately 3.9%, about the same progress last year. But if you look at our budget, we set the budget at 5.7% growth. We are not meeting that budget right now. We did have a, if you look at that schedule there, the, there was a big increase in the third month distribution. We had a growth of 164,000, but in the previous two months, we had very small growth. So as a result, right now for the first quarter, we're below budget estimates. On page 6 shows you the convention and tourism fund. The majority of the expenses are for the, for this particular fund are made up at the beginning, and that's the reason why you see more revenues than, rather, more expenses than revenues. But as the year goes by, the revenues and the expenditures should match. Then on page, page 8, page 8 is just the community development fund. These are all grant-related funds and grant-related expenditures. As we go to 10, the debt service fund, we have a payment that's due on February the 15th. So there's the reason why we show a big fund balance right now in this fund, but there, once we get that payment going in February, the revenue, the fund balance will decrease. But we anticipate having at least $1.5 million at the end of the year. On the streetscape fund, on page 11, we have a fund balance of $1.5 million. Some of this money is going to be used for the park, for the linear park, and some of the other money is also going to be used for some of the construction, for 12th Street construction that had to be paid out of this fund. On the landfill tipping fee fund, page 12, we show a fund balance of $473,086. Airport, airport will probably, will probably come to you during the year and ask for an additional funds, a budget amendment, because we started the year with around $85,000 in the red. And so we're going to need at least $100,000 as a budget amendment. How are we doing in our bridge collections? On page 15, we have two months collected so far. We are at $3,346 less than last year. So we're, we feel very comfortable that we're going to meet our $2.4 million budget as the year ends. On page 16, that's the motor vehicle parking system fund. We're at operating balance of about $246,663.
Pete, maybe you could answer this at a later time. But I know that when the county raised the toll at the, at the bridge to meet their salaries, that's where they were earmarking their money from. What do we get out of it?
We, the way the agreement is with the county is that we share equally on losses or profits. We depend, obviously, on the audit that is performed by the external auditor, and those are the numbers that we get. But we did set up a budget at 2.4 and, to answer your question, we share equally on the profit. And that's the transfer that we get by month from the county.
Excuse me?
Maybe the, I haven't checked, maybe the traffic is down, or maybe it's about even as last year. But those are the numbers so far for the first two months of the year. Page 17, that's the transit system. We have, again, the majority of the funds that we get from, for bus is not only the operating revenues, like the bus fares, but we also get a big share from the federal government, the FTA. And so far through the first quarter, they've contributed $425,250. And the state has contributed $392,971. On the golf course, on page 18, that's another fund that in the next few weeks, month, we're going to come before you and probably have another budget amendment. And the reason why we want to do this is because we want to buy some much-needed golf carts in, at the golf course. And it's going to cost around $170,000. But we need to replace about 70 golf carts because they're, they're not in good operation. And as a result, if we don't replace some of these golf carts, we're going to reduce, we're going to lose some of the much-needed revenues.
So there's another expense that we need to make.
How much are we subsidizing by?
Right now, the transfers are on $200,000. And in order for us to acquire this golf cart, it's going to probably another $170,000.
And that'll be how many golf carts, Pete?
Seven.
Seventy. Seventy. But they haven't been, they haven't been replaced since 2000, since 2000, so it's-
And it gets that much usage? We need 70 out there?
Mr. Keller, are you here?
Yes. Especially right now. This is our, this is-
Are we doing better now because of the winter Texans and?
This is the, this is the best time of the year during the first, this winter months. And the weather has cooperated, so therefore there is quite a bit of activity right now at the golf course.
What are we doing to promote more tournaments at the Brownsville Golf Course?
Speaking of, hit the mic, skip.
This Thursday, we're having the Second Annual Winter Texan Tournament. And last year, we had approximately 22 teams. This year, we're maxed out at 34. So we are increasing our tournaments, we're increasing our play. But if we don't upgrade and get new carts, we're going to start losing revenue. I had my next-door neighbor get on me today because he was out there halfway through a round and the carts, you know, the batteries ran out, so.
That's all right, we're going to get use out of them, and we've got to try and promote it year-round so we can have the use, you know?
Every year, we're doing better. I mean, you know, we've got a lot of numbers out there, but what we're paying for that course and-
This is probably going to sound ridiculous, Skip. Why can't you just get a new battery instead of getting a new cart?
The carts are worn out, they're five years old. These aren't like buying a Mercedes Benz. They get a lot of wear and tear, they're not meant to last that long, and they're, you know, they're not, they just don't last that long. Most courses replace them probably every two to three years.
What do we do?
They have a rotation, so they don't-
We're getting a trade-in value on all ones.
We get a trade-in value on the, on the-
Yes, we do.
Old golf cart?
Right.
$70,000.
$170 is a difference?
$70,000 trade-in.
About 70?
The $170 price that you gave us, is that the difference after the trade?
$70,000, we got to go trade it.
For?
So it's actually $240,000 for 70 carts.
For 70 carts? So $1,000 each?
All right. Go, Pete.
Close my presentation.
All right. This is an action item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by Commissioners Zanlos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Pete.
Item 8, consideration and action to approve the plan of finance regarding the 2006 issuance of general obligation bonds and 2006 certificates of obligation.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, Mr. Noe, Estra is going to, Inohosa-
Mr. Who?
Inohosa is going to make the presentation.
Mr. Noe?
Got adopted.
Estra.
Now you're smiling, Pete, because it's his presentation, right? Yeah.
Thank you, quick, sir.
Seeing you in a while, sir, how are you today?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Mayor, members of the commission. This presentation is pretty brief, it's pretty much the same as we did back on December the 13th. There was an interest by you and staff to proceed in funding about $7 million of general obligation bonds for street improvements and a variety of other needs that will be funded through certificates of obligation. The list is there after the cover page, where basically you'll be doing $10,510,000 for various needs, including software and hardware for citywide financial management and wireless system, and East Loop project levy relocation, right-of-way acquisitions, city plaza remodelings, and so on and so forth. And I guess, as it is customary, we've always brought to you, if you go to the next page, how in essence, if you were to not do anything this year, and that's why the column E and F are blank, you'll see in column G how your payments rise slightly from about $13,992,000 to about $14,350. On column L, you'll see that you'll be probably need a chime of a penny to be able to dedicate enough revenue to make that payment in '07. But again, that's assuming that your property values only grow or rise by 5%. So no, with all that, the rise is very, de minimis and significant. But when you bring in the new financings, then things have a greater impact, and that's on your last page, something we discussed last time we were here back in December. Your payments, as you can see on column G, will go from about $14,900,000 or $13.9 million for that matter, to about $15.8 million. That's a $2 million increase. And we're suggesting, since you have a pretty accelerated payment schedule on current bonds, that you modify that payment schedule and defer some of that principal back about five or six years, so that then you're able to achieve what you want to achieve with basically no impact on property taxes. There was a question that arose out of the presentation last year about, in December that is, about how much of a loss there was on that restructuring that we're suggesting that you do, and the loss of about $180,000 on a present value basis. And frankly, if, if you were to not do that financing and you were to go out and borrow all this money, then the impact potentially on the taxpayer is greater than you basically making an adjustment or modifying your existing debt payments.
Raising taxes.
By raising taxes on them, yes.
So Inohosa, that's it? And please forgive me if I put you on the spot.
No, no, no.
But when you and I spoke about this, what, I was against, because we have some debt that will be out in about three or four years, I was against going with this. But when you showed us the structure and when you explained to me that if we do not follow this model, and it's right here in numbers, there's no doubting it.
That's right.
That we will have to raise taxes. Now, for three years, this city commission has held the line and not raised taxes. And if it means $180,000 loss versus having to raise taxes, I think that's something that I would like for the people to understand, that making these decisions up here involves, you know, having to study these numbers, having to follow your expertise and your advice on this. And, you know, when you explained it and you said, "Would you rather lose $180,000 and restructure and save your future versus raising taxes?"
I wouldn't call it a loss. I'd call it an expense or an investment right now in order for us-
It's an opportunity value.
Exactly, in order for us to do all the projects that we want to do right now. So I just, I would not label it a loss. It allows us to do the projects while allowing us to continue at the same tax rate and do everything that we want to do at this point, so. Any other questions?
In order to get there, then on the last page, you'll see that we're contemplating selling these bonds on or about February the 21st and having funds on hand on or about March the 23rd. We will make conference calls to the various rating agencies and insurance companies. We suspect that this plan will not have any adverse effect on the city's rating. And I think based on the numbers that I'm hearing from Mr. Gonzalez, as far as fund balance and sales tax, I mean, it's only proven that you continue to administer the funds of the city in a very adequate fashion and thus I don't see any, any impact on those ratings.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioner?
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoia, seconded by Commissioner Zanlos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item. Thank you, Mr. Inohosa, or Mr. Noe.
Item 9, consideration and action to adopt resolution number 2006-007, authorizing publication of a notice of intention to issue certifications of obligation.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, since we're issuing certificates of obligation of approximately 12.5, I mean, 10.5 million, there is, under the Texas Local Government Code, requires us to publish a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, and that's what this is for. Towards the end of the handout, you'll see the notice that will be published in the newspaper twice. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by Commissioner Longoia, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item 10, consideration and appropriate action, if any, with respect to the pending labor negotiations between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Officers Association, including all salary, wage, and other matters contained therein.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Commission. At this time, we're asking that this item be tabled.
So move.
Second. Motion to table by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 11.
Item 11, consideration and action on resolution number 2006-008, creating the downtown revitalization advisory committee.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, to this resolution, we are creating an advisory committee for a length of six months to assist staff and the city commission, more importantly, to develop ideas and projects to help revitalize downtown. As you know, downtown has great economic opportunity, and we want to take advantage of those opportunities. So this committee, spearheaded by Commissioner Camarillo, will undertake some of those tasks and identifying some of those projects that we can undertake.
Look to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Who's going to be making all the nominations? You're going to contact all of the separate entities and they're going to recommend one or two people depending on?
We would submit names to you, yes.
Okay, all right. Item 12.
Item 12, consideration and action on resolution number 2006-009, creating the graffiti advisory committee.
Also with this resolution, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, what we intend to do with this committee is to, first of all, explore the reasons for graffiti in this community, identify the extent of the problem, and then try to find solutions to curtail the graffiti problem in Brownsville. This is the idea of Commissioner Camarillo, working with Dr. Ritter at the university, would start this committee along with the police officers or police leadership in Brownsville.
How many interested citizens do you want to have, Commissioner? Because it doesn't have a number there.
Right, I do understand that, Mayor. I think at least, I'd like to keep it open to as many as maybe 12, kept it at 12.
This committee, I've gotten a lot of calls from different-
Yeah, it's going to garner a lot of attention, and I want to commend Commissioner Camarillo for taking the lead on it and spearheading this. I'm glad you volunteered for it. All right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioners Zanlos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, thank you, Ben. Good luck, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item 13.
Item 13, consideration and action to authorize the city of Brownsville Aviation Department to enter into a lease agreement with Consulting Point Incorporated for 42,120 square feet of airport building number 16.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is a 42,000 square foot portion of the former NeoPlan, what was it for, excuse me, the NeoPlan complex. We would ask the City Commission for authorization to finalize this lease, subject only to any further developments that need to take place with regard to the cranes in the building.
All right.
So move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioners Zanlos, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
You got somebody to speak, Mayor? Where?
Well, this is not a public hearing. Um did you, Mr. Ingram, did you have something that you needed to say on this?
Well, this is a lease, I believe I have uh my lease says I have first option of a refusal. I don't think that was for myself. I'd like the uh the item possibly to be tabled until we can learn if it's gonna have any adverse effects on our corporation. It was just, I don't know what I can say.
Part of his agreement, we may have a to look at it.
Larry, have you?
Have you spoken with him at all, Larry?
With any written right of first refusal on this portion of the complex.
What's the timeframe with regards to?
Larry, what's that?
Hold on. What's the timeframe with regards to Consulting Point uh going and moving in?
March first.
So delaying this?
The lease would start March first. There are some things that have to be resolved before that.
Oh, I understand that. Why don't we?
Does Mr. Ingram have some type of documentation?
Why don't we table this then?
It's fine with me, I'll be more than happy to meet.
Let's let's do that.
I'll go ahead and change my motion and.
Let's address that.
I move to table.
Motion to table by Commissioners Zanetto, seconded by Commissioner Danis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen.
Fourteen, consideration and action to purchase property located on block sixty-five, lots one through two, Brownsville original town site.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, we discussed this item in executive session uh tonight. I asked for your approval of the purchase of this property uh for uh in downtown.
All right.
I think we should tell the public what it's gonna be useful.
Yeah, uh.
Yes.
Ben, why don't you uh give a brief overview of what this is about?
Christopher. If you'd like, sure. All right, thank you. Uh I just want to present a PowerPoint presentation that'll go a little bit.
If you would, go ahead and introduce yourself, since this is your first meeting. Let's let's let everybody know who you are.
That's true, sorry about that. Thank you. Uh my name is Christopher Golden. I'm a planner with the Planning Department, and what I'd like to present to you is a PowerPoint presentation regarding the historic Stegman Building and why it would be an important investment uh that would make sense for the city. Uh one of the things, before we go into this, I just want everyone to take a look at the, this is a picture that's from the early nineteen hundreds from the Stegman Building, uh very similar to what it looks like now. Uh if we could go to the next slide, uh please, thank you. And if it fades in like this, just hit it another time. There's some animation on it. Uh going into the uh breaking it down into square footage price, the next one, the historic integrity of the structure is intact, as we saw in that last picture. It's it's it pretty much looks like that today. The building is mostly vacant. Uh the building is, or the next one, please. It's a high-visibility investment. The building is centrally and strategically located, and its renovation would provide housing and minimize or maximize sales tax revenue where little currently exists today. If we go to the next slide, I just want to talk about the strategic advantage of acquiring this property. It's centrally located, and is there a laser pointer or, I'm sorry, uh if you look at the top orange there, that's the Dancy Building, that's the county renovation. Uh if you go to the bottom right-hand corner, you have the college, you have the transmodal bus station. Oh, perfect, thank you. Which button? Okay, thanks. Thank you. Uh the transmodal bus station, the college, the International Gateway Bridge, this is the core, the the retail heart of Brownsville, right there with the shopping districts on Elizabeth Street. You also have the El Haredin Hotel, you have the Capitol Theater as well. This is Market Square, and this is the Stegman Building, that's where it's located. It's direct, if you see the little target I drew around there, all of this is surrounding it, and you've got that area in the center. If we go to the next slide. Now, the vision for this uh for this particular project, ground floor retail could be anything from a coffee shop, internet cafe, artisan craft shop promoting arts and crafts of Texas and Mexico, something tourist-related. Uh the upper story would be residential, uh and we could hopefully partner with the university, supplying much-needed housing to non-traditional special needs university students. And what I mean by that is that there is currently no housing at the university that that caters to married couples, couples with children who want to attend university but really don't have any dorm options at this point. Uh so there's nothing there at this point, and this maybe would be a way to to satisfy that need in the community. And on the retail end of it, promoting tourism for Brownsville and Metamoros as well. The next slide, please. And this is just a illustration of uh conceptual illustrations of what could take place in the uh ground floor with the existing vacant spaces. Next slide, please. Now, in the ground floor retail concept, the concept on that is to provide an attraction that will encourage workers to stay after five o'clock PM, so capturing some more dollars into the downtown area. Uh hopefully, that'll have a multiplier effect to surrounding businesses. It's convenient, it would be convenient to the residents above. Uh if coffee shop goes in there, possibly internet cafe, today shoppers, uh the goal is to blend outdoor and indoor space, uh promote the culture and region, and support the tourism industry in downtown Brownsville. Now, with these retail spots, uh looking at doing market rate on those, so that they would be rented at market rate for the area. On the on the top, that's where the affordable component comes in. Uh twelve units should be able to fit up there, which would be classified as affordable. That would allow us to use CDBG funds and help us in meeting our affordable housing requirement and bring a new mix of people into downtown in addition to the people that are there already. It would encourage walking to campus, grocery stores, and affordable shops in the area, so it supports the current land use patterns of downtown being pedestrian. It'd be convenient to public transportation now and in the future, when the multimodal bus station goes, when when that is constructed. And it would bring college students into downtown with disposable income where they shop and spend money, so that'd be in addition to the money that's being spent in downtown currently. So just some illustrations as far as could this, and these are some vacant spaces. Next slide, please. Become something like this, hopefully, it's a vision. Next slide, please. Uh could this, this is currently as it sits now, and as you can see, the historic structure is still intact. There's not a lot that would have to do, you'd have to do the exterior to get it into a shining example to to help our architectural legacy here, our investment in that, too. Next, please. Something like this, and this is the Jet Building in Fort Worth on Sundown Square, where they've put sizable investments into their area, bringing extra dollars into their downtown. Next slide, please. And next, just posing the question, it all starts with a vision, and that's what we have here. Next slide, please, and a decision, and that decision, it turns visions into action, and and that decision is yours this evening. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Just one real quick comment, and I'm sorry I didn't mention, it just came to me right now while we were watching their presentation, and I didn't mention it in session. Uh Ben, we we are looking into, you said it's just a suggestion, you know, that we offer it as housing to married couples at the university. That's possibly something that could, but of course, you know, using common sense, you are gonna be careful with what you put on there. You bring in married couples with a family, children need to go to bed by a certain hour, and with the with the noise and all these things going on, that could affect studying at your apartment, your children at your apartment, those types of things.
Valid point, Commissioner, but all those though, all those things would be studied and 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 would be looked at. Uh some of these buildings are very well insulated. Uh and and nowadays, when we, according to our local building code, uh we have to put double pane windows, uh et cetera, and to, so the noise levels will, of course, not be not be as great as as standard construction or was before.
And and if I could add to that, I'm sorry, if I could add to that, I actually was a former resident in San Jose of a mixed-use apartment building that was in the heart of their entertainment district, and with the windows and technology that they have available, I have to say that I really didn't have an issue, even at two o'clock in the morning when the bars closed down. There was noise, but it was nothing that would actually uh that that would actually keep me up. So from personal experience, I have to say it's not, it wasn't a huge issue for me, so.
Any other questions? All right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo.
Is there a public hearing or business?
There isn't, but if you'd like to step forward, Mr. Holtzman.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Larry Holtzman. I've been in downtown for forty years.
Let me stop you real quick, Mr. Holtzman. We had a motion, I'm I'm gonna let you speak, though. We had a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, now we'll have further discussion. Go ahead.
I I I would be, I would respectfully ask you to consider uh issues that I would be concerned about. I represent some property owners downtown. We would be concerned about the fact that now we might be in competition with the city for rental properties. That would be one factor. The other factor is parking is a very big issue.
I brought that up.
And 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 let's talk about parking. The city has an ordinance on the books that says that the parking meter funds are supposed to go to a fund for future purchases of parking lots. That fund was taken away from us downtown after some parking spaces, some parking lots were purchased, and with the idea that really the city needed the money, and they were through buying parking spaces. Well, if you're gonna put, and I agree we need to have, it'd be great to have residential units downtown. I think the money you're you're getting is intended mainly for residential units. Why not consider broadening your scope and looking at places like in uh on on Adam Street, where it's not such a hot traffic area, places where maybe we can put some residential units closer to the college, in fact, and closer to the new bus station that's coming. I'm concerned that you're taking tack, yes, it may be empty now. Things change downtown, things are getting better downtown. It should be rented at some time. If you're paying twenty-one dollars, are you paying twenty-one dollars based on the total square footage? A lot of buildings are sold just on the down-floor square footage. The what is it gonna, the the cost of renovating this, maybe you could buy property where there is parking away from the down, the central part of downtown, and 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 put the people there. If you want to buy this building, don't put residential up there where you don't have any parking, but why would the city go into rental property into the business? I wish for you to consider that. I I I feel like that this is not an appropriate investment for uh the City of Brownsville. Thank you.
Mr. Holtzman, hold on a second. Let me let me just address, you you do raise some concerns, but uh all I've heard for years, and this is before I got on this commission, and I've also experienced it, because I've been trying to do something also, is the fact that there has been little or no investment, for whatever reason, and I'm not pointing fingers, but there's been little or no investment in downtown. One of the reasons why people are not there after hours after five o'clock is because there's nothing to do, there's nowhere to go. Um I I have my reservations about this particular project, but I can tell you that I've been waiting for the private uh interest to invest in downtown.
Yeah.
And 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 I think they have in the past, but they certainly haven't recently. I think this is uh, there is certainly some risk involved, but I think you have to look at what's worked elsewhere. Uh and I can tell you that partnerships between the communities, especially quote-unquote downtrodden downtowns, uh in cooperation and in partnership with university and higher uh institutions of education are working elsewhere, and what we should be looking at is exactly this type of a project to quote-unquote reinvest and reinvigorate downtown. Our university continues to grow by leaps and bounds as far as the number of students anticipated to be hitting twenty thousand within the next five to six years, if not sooner. Many of them non-traditional students, many of them uh citizens of our community who did not have the opportunity to go out and get a college education earlier in life, and I think um that university is being the stalwart of our future development, of our future, and I can tell you that I've been advocating for the last five and five and a half years since I've been on this commission for a Capitol Theater, and I hope to see it uh as soon as possible, but this is part and parcel of that. I do have my concerns, but I also know that we're gonna have to start sometime, and if we keep waiting for somebody else to to do it, well, I think we're gonna keep waiting. And I'm glad to hear that downtown's doing better, but I hadn't heard that before till today.
I also, sorry, Mr. Holtzman, I'd also like to comment on that when we, you know, as Ms. uh Ms. I wanted to give us some information on bus, we seem to talk a lot about downtown and say that it's a driving district. Well, I kind of differ on that, and I don't think that's the trend of this downtown as compared to trends of other downtowns in the state. And we look at what research is telling us, it's telling us that it's a more of a walking district, and I believe we have that with this building. Downtown and Market Square as of today brought in about two thousand, nine hundred and forty-five people that got in, got on a bus at Market Square. That not that got in a vehicle, that got in a bus. That's about forty-four percent of total ridership on our buses in a day. That tells me that they're not driving, they're walking. And if we go up to Austin and we go to downtown in Austin, we're not gonna drive around Austin downtown, we're gonna walk in downtown. So if we're walking in Austin in that downtown, what makes us any different in Brownsville? Now's the time, it's so critical, I think, to begin the revitalization process, which is which stemmed from Drac, and I think that's what we need to go to. I mean, I'm, I, you know, wholeheartedly respect you, Mr. Holtzman, and I look at your vision, and I'm hoping we can still, we can work together to help continue to push this forward, because ultimately the goal of myself, the mayor, and the rest of this commission is to see this downtown become an entertainment district that's gonna just, you know, cause just huge economic growth and development. That's ultimately what we want to have.
But we do have to address the parking issue.
That's that's one of my concerns.
And and it needs to be addressed uh as part of any continued investment, either by ourselves or by uh private uh investment.
Yeah, and Mr. Holtzman, I want to reiterate on that, because that's one of my concerns, and I know the commission, the mayor have heard me talk about in the past, and I spoke about it again today in session, that we need to develop some type of parking where we can offer a monthly pass, weekly, you know, charge or do something, because that's so important to revitalizing and bringing the downtown area back to life. They did that in San Antonio, they did that in Austin, and it's worked tremendously for them, and we need to start doing that here. When it go, when we go back to trying to compete with the with the housing, um I understand, and I asked one of my concerns, I asked Mr. Ben Medina, was were we gonna charge less than what the current rate is for the rental units downtown? And the answer was no, it has to be the same. Is that correct, Ben? Has to be the same. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I respect what you're saying, but I think that is that way of thinking that has kept us behind in the past when we don't take a chance, and we might be criticized a little bit now, but I really do believe that we will be that for for this decision in the future, and I'm hoping on that. And we need to bring downtown back to life, and eventually it's gonna help all the merchants, all the the people that um own businesses in downtown area.
Okay, thank you. I'm I'm gonna end with a recent purchase in downtown by Mr. Mark Clark. Hopefully, you will pass by across from the Gem on Thirteenth Street and see what he's doing to that building. Uh he bought that building, he's he was from the Smithsonian originally, came to Brownsville to retire and bought that building and is restoring it back to eighteen fifty-two.
Wow.
And and if you want to see something in action, that's something for maybe the Commissioners to.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out to us.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Holtzman. Thank you for your comments.
We appreciate it.
Buenas noches. Señor Comisionado. Si, si, si puede hablar en el micrófono, por favor. Señor Mayor, señor señor Comisionado. Mi nombre es Miguel Taveras. Soy propietario de un de un edificio próximo a la propiedad que se está planteando hoy. Yo estoy de acuerdo con con esa visión que tienen los señores que presentan la la visión. O sea, planteó un punto muy importante, y ustedes son todos residentes de Brownsville, saben a lo que yo me voy a referir. Brownsville tiene un tiempo de de ocho de la mañana hasta las cinco hasta las seis de la tarde. Downtown, y downtown desde las seis en adelante es otra ciudad. Yo creo que ese proyecto además de embellecer la la Downtown, en un punto estratégico como es esa quina que va a cambiar totalmente la fisionomía de ese bloque completo. Además de eso, lo más importante es que va a darle más actividad a Downtown, y va a ser un medio para prevenir delincuencia. Un medio para prevenir quebradura de cristales en los negocios, porque el pueblo está solo de noche. Entonces, hay que cambiar. Pero si se quiere cambiar a Brown, a Downtown, tiene que tomar en cuenta proyecto de esta naturaleza que sí van a cambiar. La el perfil de Brownsville físicamente, y sobre todo el perfil de Downtown en el aspecto ya social, y en el aspecto ya de un lugar de paz para que la gente pueda venir a divertirse sin ningún problema y sin ninguna consecuencia de de peligrar su vida que se ha saltado. O sea, yo creo que es muy importante que tomen eso. Eso solo digo prácticamente como una persona que tiene que tiene un negocio que que ha recibido como cuatro, cinco quebraduras de cristales en el tiempo que estoy trabajando. y he visto amigos que tienen negocio que también reciben esa misma experiencia. Y yo creo que es muy importante que tomen en consideración este proyecto. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Alright, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo?
I'd like to make one comment.
Go ahead Commissioner.
I think everybody up here and everybody in the audience agrees that, you know, the quality of life issues and, and how we can restore and revitalize, all the segments of Brownsville are important. Like I said in executive session, my concern is not what the project does for downtown, it's who does it. I'm a strong believer that it's the private sector that moves an economy forward, and it shouldn't be the public sector, because public sector is run with tax dollars that's generated from the private sector. I understand, and I support the project, but I can't support the retail on the bottom because, and because I think it's really important that public government not be involved or be a landlord. That's a personal feeling, as a small business person, I think a lot of other people probably agree. We, I, again, I want to go on record saying I do support the issue, the project, I think we're doing it the wrong way. And I think we need to state also the, the cost of the project before we vote on this issue, what we're gonna pay for that building, because that hasn't been stated yet. Thank you Mayor.
Alright, we have a motion to approve, thank you Commissioner, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
One nay, two nays, motion carries, the purchase amount, uh?
It's four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you Ben. Next item.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to award a contract for capital improvement program, two thousand and four CIP streets and drainage improvement, contract number one.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, at the request of our engineering director, Mr. Carlos Lassiter, the purchasing department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. These bids were opened on December fourteenth of last year. We received three bids on this particular project, the bids were reviewed by the consulting engineer, Ambiotech. Their recommendation and staff's recommendation this evening is to award to the low responsible bidder, there is nothing remarkable to report to you in this bid. The amount is one million one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred eight dollars sixteen cents. For your information on the bid tab, if Robert will switch to that, you can see the list of streets that this particular segment will cover. The engineer's estimate on this was one million three, so this is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars more. We attribute that to the rising cost of fossil fuel.
Okay, Commissioners?
This covers Queensway, Nottingham, Salisbury Court, Guadalajara, and Pinar del Rio Avenue.
Second.
You have a motion? I'm, I'm sorry, I was talking to approve. Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Arroyo, is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, Paul? Item sixteen.
Consideration in action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of uniforms for the Brownsville Fire Department.
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, the purchasing department solicited formal bids for our fire department. Uh, these bids were received on January fourth of this year. We received a total of three competitive bids on this, and we reviewed the particular line items of the types of uniforms that will be in use, and we do a projection as to the quantities, and that's how we establish the comparison number for determining the low responsible bidder. Uh, in this particular case, the incumbent contractor, Galls Incorporated, was also the low bidder on this new, uh, round of bidding. Their pricing is based on what we purchased, so we don't have a specific dollar amount, but it's based on the submitted prices per the line items of these, uh, components of the uniform. We've worked with Galls in the past for several years, we've had no issues, uh, they have good delivery and good service for the city. Contract will commence upon award and will expire September thirty-first, thirtieth of two thousand and seven, and then there's an option to renew that for two years.
Paul, and that's who we've been buying from in the past?
Yes.
Just a quick question on the, uh, on the number of uniforms, that is ba, do the employees buy them, we, we provide this to the, to the firefighter?
That's a good question, the, the employees are given a, a, uh, uniform allowance when they purchase the item.
So they can buy it anytime as it wears out and?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners? Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, motion carries. Item seventeen.
Consideration in, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one new utility tractor for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, in this particular solicitation, we, uh, went to the Byboard, a Byboard is, we have, is an agency with which we have an inter-local agreement and have done many purchases in the past. The, the awarded contractor for this particular type of equipment is a company by the name of CNCE Equipment slash John Deere, they are the Byboard awarded contractor, so we're recommending award of the purchase of one new John Deere fifty-three twenty-five utility tractor for our Parks Department to this particular vendor of Cary, North Carolina. The amount is twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars fifty cents. It's important to point out that the delivering and servicing dealer as per the Byboard contract is Barbie Newhouse here in the valley, uh, their home is in, home office is in Westlaco.
And we have funding?
Funding is in place.
Okay, Commissioners?
Move to approve?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have one public comment. Mr. Harry Ingram? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, glad to be here, my name's Harry Ingram, president of Taylor Craft Aviation. We're new to the valley, we've been here about six months, uh, we're very excited about Brownsville, the participation we've had in the citizens, and it's, it's really exciting for us. When we moved to Brownsville, we had some economic development assistance, uh, that was awarded to us, and through the efforts of, uh, Mr. Brown and, uh, Mr. Medina, we were able to, uh, contract a, uh, a bridge loan. We originally were promised about eighty-five thousand dollars, we had a bridge loan for forty thousand dollars. And what has happened, we've gone about six months now and kind of things are just falling through the cracks. The, uh, the bank would like to, uh, go ahead and release the additional funds, but we're having, we are stalled here at, uh, maybe some legal wording, or we're just not sure, but, uh, I just wanna, it's a, it's a concern of one of your constituents that, uh, we have been awarded half of the funds that were promised, and we're ready to accept the other half, but the, uh, it's just kinda falling through the crack. The, it's sitting in Mr. Medina's office right now, and it's just a, a public comment I wish everyone would be aware of.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, maybe after the meeting you can get together with our city manager, Charlie Kabler, talk to him about this concern, okay? That, that's it, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.